I'm born on September 11, 2023. It's a day to remember, so we're gonna start with a minute of silence to remember 911 victims, family members, and first responders. Thank you very much for this time to remember. After this, we're gonna, everybody gonna stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited and just as for all.
First item on the agenda, it's a NAR for Demetrius, 10--
A and R.
A and R for Demetrius, 1092 Brimfield Road.
Good evening. Hi, this is Joseph Flavette. I prepared the plan for this approval not required application. It's on behalf of Richard Demetrius. What it is, is an existing lot, an existing dwelling on it, and basically what we've done is just split the lot in half. We've given the house lot the minimum frontage required as under the current zoning bylaw. Then we have an excess of frontage for what is shown as proposed Lot A. Both lots meet frontage and area requirements as currently required by the Town Board zoning bylaw. And that's about it. One extra thing that maybe you might have noticed if you've seen this plan before, there is a temporary easement along the existing driveway. We've just allowed that for like a period of one year so that as Mr. Demetrius kind of goes through his proceedings, they have access to get to the lot that has been built up.
Remember if you have any questions?
It wasn't posted, was it?
No, it was not, no.
It doesn't have to be posted though.
An A and R?
Yeah, somebody could walk in right now and do an A and R. At a regular meeting, they can do that.
BJ is here and she does have some comments, and she's gonna be coming down. You wanna table her or?
Table her.
When is she coming?
She should be, she's in our office.
I drove by the back, your truck's back there.
Somebody will see if I can grab her now?
Yeah, yeah. Another thing, Jim, when you're in the office, there should be a marker that writes on my lot.
Okay.
Or it's got a thin tip?
Yep, it's just--
I can grab the one.
Oh, you're fast. Yeah. All right, Jim, do you want Karen to get it?
Oh, I don't mind, I don't mind.
Yep, absolutely. You know what it looks like?
I do.
That's why it's voluntary.
So you were just mentioning--
I know, your name was mentioned as you walked in.
Man, my ears are burning. Hope it was good stuff.
We have the A and R for 1092 Brimfield Road.
Okay.
And Mr. Herrera said you had some comments?
No, I think that someone, you had asked me to look at it on the A and R. I don't, I mean, I'm not sure, I didn't have any--
Looks fine.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it was pretty straightforward. Both lots are conforming. I mean, it looks like from what he's gonna do there, he's gonna split a huge lot into two. I guess there were some questions about the driveway.
Yeah.
And I think that that is because of the grade, and there's not a driveway yet established for that second parcel. Parcel, I think there's parcel A, parcel B.
Right.
But there will be one eventually whenever that land is sold. But right now, they have, they want an easement, I think, for a year.
Yeah.
If I, yeah, I was reading everything, so that it's for a year, and then, you know, so that they can get onto the property or do whatever they're gonna do, and then probably have a driveway made once someone buys another parcel. I mean, I'm making an assumption there, but the whole driveway is for right now to be able to still access that other property.
Right, okay.
All right.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to endorse the A and R for Richard and Kathy Demetrius at 1092 Brimfield Road.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
David Dufrain, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Richi Harker, aye.
Motion passes. So, we begin.
And I think we can sign it. This is Dusty, he's getting a pen.
Yeah, he's getting, she's getting a pen.
Because this one's too big.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's for the payroll.
Go for it.
My ears are burning. Hope it was good stuff.
We have the A and R for 1092 Brimfield Road.
Okay.
And Mr. Herrera said you had some comments?
No, I think that someone, you had asked me to look at it on the A and R. I don't, I mean, I'm not sure, I didn't have any--
Looks fine.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it was pretty straightforward. Both lots are conforming. I mean, it looks like from what he's gonna do there, he's gonna split a huge lot into two. I guess there were some questions about the driveway.
Yeah.
And I think that that is because of the grade, and there's not a driveway yet established for that second parcel. Parcel, I think there's parcel A, parcel B.
Right.
But there will be one eventually whenever that land is sold. But right now, they have, they want an easement, I think, for a year.
Yeah.
If I, yeah, I was reading everything, so that it's for a year, and then, you know, so that they can get onto the property or do whatever they're gonna do, and then probably have a driveway made once someone buys another parcel. I mean, I'm making an assumption there, but the whole driveway is for right now to be able to still access that other property.
Right, okay.
All right.
I mean, make a motion?
I'll make a motion to endorse the A and R for Richard and Kathy Demetrius at 1092 Brimfield Road.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
David Dufrain, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Richi Harker, aye.
Motion passes. So, we begin.
And I think we can sign it. This is Dusty, he's getting a pen.
Yeah, he's getting, she's getting a pen.
Because this one's too big.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's for the payroll.
Go for it.
The durafls will come to the end of the case.
Yeah.
Ditch, can you bring the zoom back over there? I am just gonna block that area.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I can do it.
Oh, you can, okay.
Because it makes a big difference when I was--
Yeah.
On the airplane, trying to be at the meeting.
Usually I remember to do that.
So where's the window? That's us. Is that the guy?
Mm-hmm.
Am I blocking the--
You just gotta make it smaller. Can I get a move?
Thanks. Right there, right?
Well, over a little bit. It's really hard to move, though. There you go.
Right there?
Yeah, maybe make it a little wider, a little bigger now? Ooh, yeah, not that much. Okay, one more, one more small.
That's as small as it can go before it goes to one strip.
We have a little like, oh, you have the plus and minus.
Is that good?
That's probably good.
So it doesn't pick up that noise?
Yeah.
Well, if you guys didn't have to have a sub, it wouldn't have to be on.
Can't happen. You'd rather ditch than than.
You know, and I take that back, the one that came here is this one. Because of the AC, because I was watching--
What project is this?
Oh, really?
Oh, if one's being in there, that's not weird.
You mean yourself?
Yeah, that's not the worst one. All right. Hey, wanna--
Oh, that's number four. Let's see.
All right, well, down now that. I'm looking, I'm like, wait a second here, this ain't our project.
Is that ignoring?
Oh, it's like in the same town.
Okay, good. Then our signatures are completely available. I just thought the signature--
I'm printing at the same time and just slipped one in the--
Oh, I thought the signature block just printed funny on that one.
Sounds like something I'm gonna do.
I have some military contracts to sign, boy, you wanna enlist?
Yeah. I'm good at signing.
Ever since my experience with the recruiter, I read everything I sign now.
Yeah. You mean, you didn't get that post in the Bahamas?
No, they didn't tell you the truth? You don't think they told you the truth?
Well, they told me their truth. I did meet interesting people around the world.
Yeah, that was a happy--
Oh, I'm sure they were interesting. Oh, yeah.
You see the world.
Yeah.
Don't put soda in there.
No, because it shoots up at you.
It, at the airport, it flooded all, I was soppy wet, Jim was wet, just--
Really?
So I threw it in the garbage because I was so mad.
Yeah, there's like no pressure release, it builds up pressure inside.
Yeah. All right, so we need what, two copies?
Yep.
And the rest are yours.
I think we're all set. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Do you all need the third copy? Give it to Rick.
Not being rude, just trying to get us out of here. Next item is the continuance of public hearing on special permit.
So just go in the pile?
Number 310 and site plan approval number 68 for Cal Rolling Hills LLC under section 3.28 and section 8 of the Town of Warren zoning bylaws. The applicant is seeking a special permit to remove earth material from the property located at Gilbert Road, Warren. This parcel is also known as a scissors map 5 block 2225, which is in the rural district. A copy of the application may be inspected in the town's clerk's office during normal business hours.
Bring that. Just pass this down. I think they're stuck together, or they're, no, they're stapled.
Good evening. I'm Mr. President, Mr. President, next, David, Eric, Mike Shea.
What is it?
Representing Cal Rolling Hills. At the last meeting, there was a request for an update to the plans to show the access road through here to the active work area and to show the one acre staging area that we have shown on the plans. That was the only item that was left outstanding and the only change that we made to the plans so that we could show that and the staging area for the stabilization of the site outside the requested seven acre upgrade area.
And the staging area is on previously used--
Correct.
Area?
Yes.
Okay, correct. Okay.
So I got a question. Do you guys have a, you're showing a well? Two of two, there's a well at the bottom of the design?
Yes.
Is that your well?
It is.
Is it used for, again?
We use it a lot of a dust control time to time. It's the only source of water up there.
But it's occasionally, so it's not, not an everyday use, or?
Well, when it like this, we wouldn't do it.
Okay.
But there's times we gotta do it every day. We have a big tank, we fill up, and we just pump up the tank with sprinklers around the yard.
So your total work area is 40 acres, but you're only opening up seven at a time--
Correct.
--to work, and it's one acre staging area.
Yep.
I have not really any questions. I do have something accompanied here, but not directly to the project itself. Just about the torres.
About the what?
The torres.
The torres?
Yeah.
Please don't run over the job.
If you have fires or something, let them know. I know it's impossible, but we have tried to make a note of it.
So the previous permit allowed temporary use of Gilbert Road. I don't think we need that anymore, right?
No, that's Gilbert Road, that's used anymore, I don't think.
Okay.
Don't want to use Gilbert Road.
No. Okay, so we can put that in the conditions that Gilbert won't be used anymore, okay. So where are you gonna store the grindings, if you do the grindings?
It would be in that laid out area.
Okay.
We're only talking one or two truckloads.
In the staging area?
Yes. The repair area, yeah.
So just make sure we identify that--
Yeah.
Some road grindings will be maintained in the staging area.
And the staging area again is gonna be vehicles and equipment, is that how your--
Equipment in.
Be storing equipment there, and then if we have breakdowns or repairs, we have to do what'll be done in that designated area.
Okay.
You're not storing any oils or anything in there?
No.
No hazardous materials?
Everything to the trucks that come and work on equipment, they have their own oil debris and all that stuff.
And everything's removed from the site?
Yes.
Are you gonna, there's a little piece of stone wall over there that you're gonna be removing in this new area. Is it, are you gonna, is it somewhere else, or?
Where's that?
Be located in the--
No, one of your--
One of your--
Yeah, that's actually a wall that they built.
No, no, up on the hill, up on the hill.
Oh.
Go down, go down.
Here?
To the right, up, up, up.
Those are, those are rocks that are around the top and bottom of the slope, so people will--
Yeah, it's wood.
Yeah.
Because you're gonna, you're gonna cut it now. So this is 740 right now, which is all this flat area. You have up 48, 45 feet of elevation over here, you're gonna grab all that out.
Right.
So there's a stone wall here, I thought they were, you know, reusing or something.
Well, that's part of what the regulations were governed by, exemption of mine, safety, and health penetration. So they make us put stone barriers on all the edges. They have to be half the size of the biggest tire on the biggest piece of equipment. Just so if there's a runaway piece of equipment, you don't go over naked or you don't go and--
Got it.
So we're constantly moving those around out on the limits of the project.
Because basically what they're doing, all this is flat right now. And they're gonna, you know, escalate all this section, they want it to be flat. Beautiful place.
I don't think they allow visitors up there.
No.
Very scenic, though.
It's just something so different that you see a-- Anybody?
So we would vote to close the hearing, and then we could go right into a meeting workshop and talk about the special permit. Everybody's still kept going, they could do that.
Do we need a public, next?
Any comments?
Any? Any comments from the public present here on Zoom? No comments, no comments from the board? No.
I'll motion to--
All right, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for special permit number 310 and site plan approval number 68 for Cal Rolling Hills LLC.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
David Dufrain, aye.
David Dufrain, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Richi Harker, aye.
Getting closed. One more comment or questions? And are we gonna have our next meeting, we're gonna--
We're gonna do it now?
No, we can do it right now.
We're trying to accelerate the process a little bit.
Oh, perfect.
So, did everybody get a chance to look at the old?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. So, I would say, besides all the boilerplate stuff, we get rid of--
Gilbert Road.
On page two, it talks about five, section 5.1.3, the temporary use of Gilbert Road. We're gonna get rid of that and just say, you know, we can just use boilerplate replacement. Then under additional conditions, the first paragraph, we would just mention that the grindings go in the staging area.
Right.
We should list out that we're gonna allow that one acre plot for equipment storage and vehicle repairs. We can get rid of paragraph two.
I wouldn't say vehicle repair, I'd say equipment repair.
Yeah, okay.
Because some of that stuff's not vehicles.
Yeah, okay. The third paragraph about any damage done to Gilbert Road, I can say we can put in there instead that Gilbert Road won't be used anymore. And then the last two paragraphs, we can probably just leave, well, get, no, no, because they deal with an amendment. Well, we can just reword that fourth paragraph, right? Because this isn't an amendment, is not an amended--
Right.
--special permit, it is the--
Special permit, it's not amended.
And then the provision. I don't even think we need the fifth paragraph, because they've already gotten established. I think this was to cover in case they didn't get started.
You mean the provisions of it?
Yeah. Yeah, about the one, one-year expiration, I mean, it doesn't even--
Yeah, no, we don't need it.
Okay. And I think that was it. And I think that was it.
Hold on, with the fifth one, why would you take out the, the fact that it expires in one year and they can apply for a new one for an additional year?
Because they've already got us, they're, they're already going.
They're in operation.
I think this was when it first opened.
Yeah, but it's all like, all of them were.
Well, no, it's actually a two year. So I don't know why they did a one year.
But why wouldn't we put, saying that there's an expiration from the commencement of this?
I don't know.
So you, you get two years from the date of this and then you get a renewal after that, up to three renewals, right?
Yeah, but this, this seems like it was specifically written to have this lapse in one year if they didn't do anything.
They didn't start operations.
They didn't start operations.
They have ongoing operations.
But they, yeah, they have.
Probably wouldn't apply.
Right, that's what my point was, I guess, that.
What did you think about the timeline, three extensions?
Yeah, because then they say it's clearly defined. On the permit. That's, that's what this was approved under. And they're allowed up to three extensions.
Yeah, we can put that in there.
Yeah.
So it's five years and then three?
Three, three year extension.
Three, three years?
Yeah.
You get fourteen years of it?
Yeah. Do we have anything saying the special permits are non-transferable?
Maybe in the bylaw?
Cause I'd make sure of that too, is saying that the special permit's non-transferable with the, um, purchase and sale of the property. This way somebody doesn't go in there and say, I bought a, a ready-made. You know, project here.
You know, would that be covered under Mass General law or would?
Well, you could put a condition on there saying that it's, it's only, uh, the, the special permit is only valid for the petitioner only.
Okay.
You guys are good with that?
Yeah, in the event that you probably just sold your new special permit. Like.
Right.
Does it say that in the bylaws?
Oh, no, I haven't got that, sorry.
Oh, okay.
I'm writing and looking, it's in there.
Yeah, I don't necessarily see that, so.
Well, we can add it as a condition.
Yeah, cause if someone takes over, I think we wanna review.
You wanna know what they're doing.
Know the Cal.
Start the process.
Yeah.
Start it again. So I can really think of. Drew?
All right, so we gotta work on this and then we can vote. I mean, generally seem to agree with it, it's a viable project, so. We just need to get this in order and maybe if we could find this on disk, I mean, on the hard drive?
Uh, maybe, I, I, I'm highly doubtful. I mean, it's from two thousand and ten.
Floppy disk somewhere?
Yeah.
I mean, there might, there's a small, small, small chance that it's there.
Just say no.
I doubt it. I haven't checked, so I.
From two thousand and ten.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's, wow, okay.
You kidding me? Somebody with Ed's skill will have this done five minutes.
Well, not five minutes, but. No. Cause then, I mean, if the panel gets over, I can build a book on it. Do you wanna do that or?
You go ahead.
Other ones, I can check this out.
Are you gonna type the whole thing though?
Is it, is it PDF or an image?
It's a PDF.
Send me, I have a PDF reader, I can.
Oh, you have it? Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah.
PDF.
That's even easier.
Okay, yeah.
If it's a PDF, you can make it happen.
PDF converter?
Just the plain version allows you to, you know, compare it to a Word document.
There you go.
Okay.
Depends on how well you have this, but yeah, most of the time it's really good. You may have to adjust little things, but you don't have to retype the whole thing. So do we have to do a motion to end up discussion?
No.
No. Okay, so everything looks positive and, you know, it's just a matter of typing and saving documents and making it easy and we vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My good ones. Next, we have a meeting workshop to discuss special permit number three ten and site plan approval number sixty eight for Cal.
We just did that.
Next, continue discussion on rules and regulations for site plan approval.
Really don't have much to discuss, I wrote them up last time here. I gotta change a few words, cause I don't like having submit submitted three times in one sentence. They're pretty straightforward.
You wouldn't send it to a publisher?
Not a publisher would send it like that. But you probably tell me the things longer too. I mean, it's pretty straightforward. We went over it last time, nothing's changed.
In your own words, how would this benefit the town?
How would they do it proceed?
Yep.
It would make it simpler and easier for people to understand and it would make it simpler for people to hear like the new planning voice at the table to see how it works. They're just, it's, I mean, it's streamlined, I hate that word.
Can we add that to the beginning?
Streamlined makes it all better?
Yeah.
Sure.
No, it's just why we're doing this.
Yeah, I mean, well, because the, the, I mean, the past ones were just confusing and then the ones I looked up in other towns were worse. So we were acting like we did, you know, um, but yeah, this is just simple and easy to follow. One, two, three.
Very good, I thank you very much. What's, what's next then? We.
I, I just make these changes and.
Was it, is this one of those things that goes into the planning board thing or it has to go?
Yeah, you send me a PDF and we should, and you should mail the Word document to planning board and then a new person can file it however they file it.
That's fine, sure.
Okay. Number four is an update from the town administrator on the building and planning secretary search on that and to create an interview committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, this evening I come before you, um, as you are all made aware of that we are continuing the process in the search for a, a new building and planning secretary and to get that office ramped up. Currently, we have thirty-two applications that were submitted for review. Of the thirty-two, there's probably about five to six, um, that are potential, that, you know, would qualify for the position and, and would be worthy of a, of an interview. There's a, a whole host of, of candidates that have, either have some municipal experience, some state level experience, um, you know, there's a, a, a good cross-section of, of people that have had, um, you know, some stability, uh, staying with a position for a long period of time versus somebody that maybe tends to jump around. And so it's a, it's a good mix of, of candidates. Mostly all of the, the candidates that had municipal experience also had a bachelor's degree and some other specialized training. So I'm hoping that, um, we could have an interview relative, start the interviews relatively quickly. Uh, I would seek your guidance, Mr. Chairman, as to if you wanna serve on, on the interview committee or if you wanna designate somebody uh, to serve on the interview committee. I know that, uh, our building commissioner has expressed an interest to serve on the committee. Typically, myself, uh, serves on the committee as well. Um, I'm not sure what your, your preferences or thoughts were.
So I'd like to make a recommendation.
Yes, please.
So I would recommend two people along with yourself, so three people review all the applications, pull the top five. Those five would be referred to, I'd, I'd say the rest of the board for, uh, the hiring committee and that committee would actually do the hiring. Like you would do a referral of five top applicants with Mr. Farrar and then the hiring committee would actually go through and do the interviews. So. This way, everybody gets a little piece. Depending on how it goes, initially, I do have to recuse myself.
Okay.
My mother-in-law put in for the job.
The electric.
So to keep the peace at home, I am recusing myself.
And we want BJ in on that too.
The electrical inspector also asked.
Yep. And they could be on the hiring or review the applications. But if you split it up, then you have different people, the five, five top applicants, because then you don't have a quorum because you only got two members of the board. You don't have three members of the board. With yourself, you'd easily go through, pull the top five out of there. And then depending on who's chosen out of those top five, if my mother-in-law's still in the process, I would have to recuse myself from the second half. So. It's just with my recommendation.
Actually, how many is it, whatever?
Yeah, it's easy, that's fine. Whatever is easier makes it more fun.
I want to participate in the interview. In the interview. Interview. So, uh, then somebody else could participate in the hiring committee.
I have the next, this week and next week. I can't do anything.
That's fine, I'm, I'm just giving you the chance.
Sure, I'm, I'm up for anything, just as long as it's not involving this week and the following week.
Does that work for you?
Sure, um, yes.
So if you guys review the applications.
Yeah, we can review the applications.
If you do that with Mr. Farrar, pull the top five and then they can do the interviews.
Okay.
With Mr. Farrar and BJ and all of them, but it should be easy to weed out to the top five because, you know, you're looking for municipal experience and planning board experience, things like that. Same.
No, you're good.
This way, not everybody's doing the one thing.
But the application submission, I mean, the deadline is fixed, right?
Deadline's Friday.
The deadline's Friday.
Deadline's Friday, so this is just.
This Friday.
This Friday. So this is just some pre-planning, uh, talking about it, uh, discussion as to how the committee would like to proceed. Just some other recommendations that I wanna throw out there and this, this, you know, this will probably have to go in front of the select board as well. But, you know, it, it, it's tough to find somebody to just do the twenty-nine hours, you know? You know, in, in other departments, um, that, you know, say for example, the assessors, they're at thirty-five hours. And a lot of building departments and planning departments are, are, have a lot, you know, have more hours because it's a department that generates money for the town.
So you bring that up. I actually thought of that and I forgot about it, but this position should be a forty-hour a week position.
With Friday.
It should be a Friday. Should be Monday through Friday.
Cause BJ's here on Fridays?
BJ's here on Mondays afternoons, only one day a week. And, you know, I, I get a ton of calls, to be honest with you, of people that have, you know, issues with, you know, filling out applications for permits, from, uh, issues of planning issues of, you know, does this qualify within our zoning bylaw, to issues for, um, you know, code enforcement and different things that, you know, could have to be, you know, triggered for an inspection or an inspectional service. So I mean, I think at the, at the minimum, it should be, you know, at least thirty-five hours minimum.
Can we, do we have a budget for forty hours?
No.
A lot of budgets for it. Okay, so we'd have to, the special we'd have to ask.
So we would have to, you know.
So you have a budget for twenty-nine hours?
Correct. I mean, that's historically how that.
Right, no.
And so how can we change it to thirty-five?
So we, we would have to make a, uh, you know, put some additional money into the account, uh, to cover a salary for, for more hours. I mean, it's already a full-time position, but it's a twenty-nine hour full-time position. So you're not, you know, it's not like it's costing the town, well, now we have to pay benefits. We already have to pay benefits.
Just the additional.
Just the additional hours and to have access to the public. And I think the public would appreciate that because I, like I said, I've gotten several calls, uh, from people that have a planning question, building question, you know, looking for, uh, somebody to get back in touch with them. And, and necessarily, you know, this, this person may not know the answer, but can log it, can track it and to get it to BJ or to Scott or to one of the inspectors.
There's a lot more involved and what somebody's not doing for actual work, they can be doing in training too. To make themselves more proficient with their job.
So forty hours like you.
Well, I mean, if that's, if that's a recommendation that the board would want to do, I think that's good.
I think that.
I've heard the selectmen say they want the building open all week, so a little Friday, so I mean, this would cost.
Oh, good, I have somebody to talk to.
Bigger.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I mean, it's a full-time division. It ought to be a full-time division.
And it's a busy office.
I think there can be justification.
The gentleman back there seems to be nodding his head in agreement to it.
So would you do twenty for building and twenty for planning or would you divide it up differently?
Good question. What is it, how's it divided now?
Well, once fourteen and once fifteen. I mean, I, I think you could just make the person say, hey, look, if something comes up, handle it.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
So if it's slow for, for building, then the person isn't gonna work the twenty hours, they're just gonna sit there?
Can, can you just remind us, why is it split up? Do you know? Do you know?
Because of the, because it comes out of two budgets. It comes out of building budget and planning budget. That's why it's split.
I mean, we could just...
Consolidate it into one budget.
We could do that at the annual.
It's one position.
Yeah, we could do that at the annual.
I think that's when it was two positions, right? Because it used to be two, right?
Not that I...
Yeah, one budget, one person, 40 hours a week, 5 days a week. Does whatever needs to be done for both.
We can address a lot of that at the annual, just to get along, we can put some money in at the special, get us through to the end of the year, fiscal year, and then look at that way, if you want to do 20 and 20 for budgetary purpose.
You've got to remember, Jill's been gone for a little bit, too, so there's been nothing being taken out of that budget, so...
Yeah, by the time we actually get somebody in a seat...
There's going to be a little extra in there.
Couple weeks, so, you know.
And they're probably not going to be making as much, well, depending on experience and stuff.
So, and, you know, and then there's, you know, obviously, if the town wants to move to a, you know, a digital record system, you know, down there, you're going to need somebody to really, you know, be in there to get all of the digital records, you know, itemized and, you know, categorized, and really go through all of the file cabinets. I mean, if you walk into the office, that particular office has got like 20 file cabinets. It's the most filing cabinets of any office in town. So, you know, there's a lot of paperwork in there.
Yeah, a lot of organization is needed, or reorganization.
So, we're good?
We're good.
Okay, so, we'll start with the hiring, or, I mean, the interview committee, right?
No, reviewing, we're going to purge all 30 to five, the best five.
Go all through the applications.
Rich and Derek, right?
Yeah.
We're going through 30 applications.
32, yeah.
Well, that makes it sound better.
As of right now, it could be more by Friday.
Yeah.
Oh, you say we have, you said that we had to be done by Friday.
No, that's when they're all set.
That's when the live is ready.
Eh, no problem, 50 if you want.
All right, you should go through them, too, though.
Yeah.
Sounds like you probably already have.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well... Well, I'll let you guys make your recommendations, and we'll see what, see if we can agree on something.
Everybody will be given an equal chance that submitted an application to be reviewed.
No, that's why we're going through 32-plus applications.
Very best way to express that.
Go through everybody.
Yeah.
Nobody has been predetermined.
No.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
We have a plan. Now, the board will receive any public comments or concerns.
Well, so, I, we were just talking about there was no secretary, so I couldn't get put on the agenda, so I need to, I'm going to, I guess, ask to be put on the agenda for the next meeting, but if you wanted, I could show you what I want to talk about.
Sure.
Yeah?
It's not on my R-Plan, because it's just like a, a lottery. So, I, a couple years ago, I bought on, built on Main Sugar, next to the park, and I had owned the land next to it for a few years. And recently, I bought the rest of the land with the existing multifamily house. So, what I'm trying to do, this is the land I already built on, what I want to do is build four units here, two colonial styles, and they're going to be condominiums. I have the frontage for what zoning asks for. The minimum is 75, I have 90, 91 feet. The side setbacks are...
Signed out, Rich?
No, it's still going. I just got signed out at this point.
The proposed new lot area would be 33,000 square feet, so with frontage, the side setbacks, the lot area, it meets all the requirements for zoning. Then what would happen is, we would cut off a lot for this multifamily that I'm currently rehabbing, and then that would stay a multifamily, and it would give us a new lot in between the two, with 78 feet of frontage and just over 18,000 square feet of area, which I would build another one of these buildings in that lot. That would be the plan.
That's right there.
Yeah, it's this, this, well, it's not really, they know, but yes, this is that area. So, that's the one I already built, that's the multifamily I'm talking about, and then we're, in between here is what we're working on now.
And your concern is?
I don't have a concern, I wanted to see if you had, I guess, if you guys would have concerns before I put this on a Mylar Plan and brought it to you.
What do you ask for? Are you asking for an A&R or a special permit, or...
I guess this will become an A&R. I guess my only concern was this, there shouldn't, so, I have, this is a two-family building right now that we're building. I want to build the same exact building next to it on this lot, and it's going to be a condo development, and there's going to be four units total.
So, shared lot?
But it's, well, it's, it's a shared lot, because they're condos. It's not like, so there's four units, like, this one was two units, it's a shared lot, so this is just four units.
Have you gone through the building commissioner?
Not with this yet, no. She's, she has seen the building plans for this building, but I didn't bring up this to her yet until, I guess, I got your guys' opinion.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be, I don't know what it means.
I would run it past the building commissioner.
Okay.
And see what she says, and present your plans to her, and if she feels like you're going to have to apply for an A&R, then you would apply for the A&R and come forward in front of us. If you're going to need a variance in any way, then you would need to go in front of the ZBA, zoning board of appeals, for variance, because we don't do variances. So...
So, can you show on the map, is it this piece of land here?
It's right, these are the two units I already built.
Oh, here.
So, now, we're talking about this and this are combined, well, see how this says 104?
Yep.
I'm going to make it 91. And then this says 145, we're going to make that 80. There is an existing house right here, and then we would, there'd be a new lot right here. But on this 91, if I go by zoning with the amount of units, you need 6,000 square feet per unit, we have over 33,000 square feet, and I only want to do four units. I guess my concern is, is it's just, you know, it's two separate structures, but I have them, the side setbacks are 16 feet, which you need 15 feet. And I just don't know if there would be, I don't think there'd be any issue with it, the engineer that drew it said there shouldn't be any issue, but I just wanted to bring it. And I know we're not voting on anything, I just wanted to get your opinions or your ideas.
Yeah, I don't know, you're right, go to BJ and see what happens with, yeah, Mass General's BJ. I mean, minimally, you're going to need an A&R from us.
Right.
And then, I don't know about the rest of it.
Yeah.
Actually, maybe that's all, that may be all you need.
Building permits.
And it's just going to be regular building stuff, so, and she would be able to...
But, yeah, run it by her and see what she says.
If you check all her boxes, the A&R here is a piece of cake, so...
Yeah.
I think it's a, it's a, what you're doing is great, bringing houses and, you know, for families, and brings taxes to the town, and it brings, you know, more people in town.
Is this town sewer and water?
It is, yes.
Excellent.
Also helps.
Yeah.
Their connection fee rates, so...
Yes, they did.
Yeah. I was shocked.
Yeah, while they were, yeah, they had undercharged for a long time.
Yeah. But, yeah, it's town water, town sewer, there is gas on the street, but plenty of it's to go, with electric, with the mini splits, like, high-efficiency systems. But if, you know, if I change my mind on the heat, there is gas on the street to go, but that matters. All right, yeah, I just wanted to run it by you, and so I'll take it to BJ and have her look at it, and then, yeah, it would just be the A&R.
Yeah, from a point of view of the planning board, you look at the use of land, that's residential, you know, if you were coming here to say you're going to put something else, then we will talk about it, but it is residential right now, so it's more like, make sure you check all the boxes with the building commissioner, and you're good to go.
And she has office hours on Monday.
Mondays, yeah.
Two to six.
Okay, I'll go see her next Monday. All right, thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You, too. Any more public comments or concerns from Zoom, from here, from the board? Nothing? Next, there's a possible vote to approve any payroll bills, budget items?
There's two bills that have come in.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to pay Turley Publications in the amount of $150, and another one for Turley in the amount of $219.10.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
All in favor.
And all in good eye?
David Dufray, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Rich Ihacker, aye.
Bills, motion, pass. Next is, do we have a possible vote to approve the minutes from August 28th meeting?
I'll make a motion to vote, to approve the meeting minutes from August 28th.
There needs to be modification. My name is Kelly.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Take out the first G and we're good to go.
Okay, all right, too. I got it right from the website, so it must be one of them.
Excellent.
Oh, and I'll make sure that gets changed.
Shush, I probably put his name on there.
You probably did.
We'll correct that on the website, then.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the August 28th, 2023 minutes as amended.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All in good eye.
And all in good eye?
David Dufray, aye.
Rich Ihacker, aye.
And I wasn't here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, okay.
Our next meeting is Monday, September 25, at 7:15. That's in two weeks from now, today.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All in good eye.
And all in good eye?
David Dufray, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Rich Ihacker, aye.
And we are adjourned.